I'm calling this meeting to order. This is a special business meeting of the Redmond City Council, held on Monday, August 4, 2025, commencing at 7:00 p.m. I'm presiding over this meeting as Mayor Pro Tem. I will roll call, starting with Councilmember Forsyth, Council Vice President Forsyth.
Here.
Here.
Here. Fields.
Fields here, great.
Here.
Here.
Great. Let the record show all the councilmembers are in attendance. The first item on the agenda is an executive session to discuss potential litigation, RCW 42 dot 30 dot 1101i, for 20 minutes. The executive session will adjourn at 7:22. Per state law, the executive session is closed to the public. Following the executive session, the council will return to the chambers. Executive session participants attending remotely, please leave this meeting and join the executive session teams' meeting. Thank you. And we're back. The next item on the agenda is a presentation from Jeremy Heber, Recognizing Redmond as a Just Serve City. Welcome.
I think I'm here, right?
Go ahead.
My name is Jeremy Heber. I'm with Just Serve. I'm with a group of volunteers from the Redmond, Kirkland, Samamish area that help run Just Serve. We're here to present the city of Redmond with an award and a designation of a Just Serve City. I'm going to explain a little bit about what that is, and then we have a nice plaque that we'll give to you to recognize you for the Just Serve designation. Just Serve was launched in 2012 as a free service to help match organizations who have needs for volunteers with people who want to volunteer. It helps people identify the needs of the community and find opportunities to serve. It's for all organizations. It's for cities, schools, charities, faith organizations, and other organizations who provide primarily services to the community in various ways, mainly nonprofits. It helps to bring people together in a spirit of working together to be united in service, and it helps cultivate a culture of service in lives and individuals, families, and groups. As part of Just Serve, it has a global reach. Right now, it's in 16 countries. It has about a million registered volunteers on the site, and has over 16,000 organizations that are listed on the website. Redmond, the city of Redmond, is one of those organizations.
Amazon Fire.
And you can see here, it has a global reach in the types of organizations that are part of Just Serve. Locally, in the area, there are a variety. This is just a sample of some of the organizations that are on Just Serve today that have volunteer opportunities, either regular, ongoing, or yearly type of opportunities for service. We've, in the past, worked with Redmond and listed volunteer opportunities for Redmond on this. So, like the Redmond Green Partnership, the Derby Days, and ongoing services. And we link back to the Redmond volunteer site to promote those opportunities. And we've done this either in partnership or to help promote service across these various organizations locally. As part of the Just Serve, in 2023, in the National League of Cities in Georgia, the city program was launched. Mayor Victoria Woodard shared just how Just Serve, she's the mayor of, at the time, was the mayor of the city of Tacoma, shared how Just Serve helped promote service and helped her community in Tacoma. And Mayor Woodard, who was then president of the National League of Cities, invited all cities to become a Just Serve City. And these are some of the inaugural cities that were designated as Just Serve cities and participated in the initial launch of Just Serve. So, for today, we're here to recognize the city of Redmond as a Just Serve City for encouraging and supporting diverse groups of service in the community. We want to thank you also for doing things like promoting service through city proclamations that was done last year as part of the Martin Luther King National Day of Service in 2024, and then also for continuing sponsoring volunteer opportunities on your site through newsletters, either on your website or the newsletters, or for a variety of service opportunities that you have in the city and ongoing. So, with that, this is your city recognition and your plaque, and I'd love to hand this to somebody. Take this. And, thank you. All right. And this is my group of volunteers with us, and they're holding up their cameras, so thank you.
Wonderful.
Yeah, sure. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is items from the audience. I have the sign-in sheet here for members of the public to speak tonight. When I read your name, you'll come up to the podium and have three minutes to address the council. Councilmembers will generally not respond to comments or questions directly at the meeting. Members of the public are welcome to email the council anytime at mayorkouncil@redmond.gov. The views stated by members of the public do not represent the opinion of the city of Redmond. As a reminder, RCW 42 dot 17A dot 555 prohibits any public comment during the council meeting in support or opposition of ballot propositions, measures, or candidates. All comments must pertain to the city of Redmond business as indicated on the sign-in sheet. There are eight people signed up to speak tonight, and one person has signed up to speak remotely. So, we'll get started. I'll name the first three names, and you can come up to speak for your three minutes. The first is Erin Hamilton, then Rebecca Bloom, then Chester Anderson. Go ahead, Erin.
No. No.
I'm just curious. Okay. Did you hand out the... Awesome. So, Director Hamilton, the mayor, and many of you like to say that Marymore is safer and more accessible for our teens. As you know, majority of the teens are located where the schools are, Redmond Middle School and High School. I can prove that wrong with one photo. Just flip to the second page. You'll see, looking down from 176, I also have copies for people that want, looking down from 176 to Marymore Station, you'll see quite a shocking reveal that the sidewalk ends, and there's no sidewalk on either side of the street after the apartment building. You can see that there are no sidewalk markings, no indication that there's even a crosswalk there. There's no flashing signal. There's no flashing signal or anything. You see an ADA sidewalk ramp on the left side that goes nowhere. There's nothing to help other people. There's nothing to the right to help people get over the curb to the sidewalk that doesn't exist. Watch out for the electrical boxes, fire hydrant. That's all blocking the path. Also, zero bike lanes on either side. This is a high-traffic road that feeds to the light rail station. So, are we just asking our kids to play Frogger on this street? Is this really safe? I don't think so. But anyways, let's talk about more accessibility. As you see on the next page, you'll see pretty much details of how to get, the differences in times and what's involved in getting to, from Redmond Middle School, Redmond High School, to the Redmond Community Center. Bus and light rails, 35 minutes, multiple transfers. If no light rail service is available, it's 39 minutes or more, 41 minutes, 39 to 41 minutes, and walking, not all the way. As you can see, very high traffic, increased stress for people, easy access to Mac and Jack's and Postalk Brewing for the kids to take a break and have a tasty beverage right next to the Redmond Community Center. That's safe. Walk access from Marymore, pretty much nonexistent. Let's compare that to getting from Redmond Middle School to Redmond High School to the Old Firehouse. It's a 28-minute walk on a sidewalk, protected signals. You can walk there faster than taking public transport to Marymore. That's telling. The bus ride is 13 minutes, one bus, and you just walk six minutes to the firehouse. Clearly, the more safer and accessible option for these teens is the Old Firehouse.
Thank you. The next person up to speak is Rebecca Bloom. And after that, we'll have Chester Anderson, then Connor. Go ahead.
Council members, thank you for the opportunity to comment this evening. My name is Rebecca Bloom. I am Chief Investment Officer with Columbia Pacific Real Estate's, Columbia Pacific Advisors' Real Estate Equity Strategy. We own the property located at 690188th Avenue Northeast, also known as the Redmond Flex site. We appreciated the council's thoughtful discussion of the proposed docket request for the Flex site at the study session on July 22nd, and the direction to staff to add the request to the docket for final approval tonight. Moving ahead with docketing this item and then updating the split zoning designation will provide Columbia Pacific with the flexibility to develop the Flex site with residential uses, including affordable housing units. Residential uses on this site will complement the neighborhood adjacencies, like Southeast Redmond Park, and property owned by the Lake Washington School District. Docketing the proposal is a crucial step in the process so that it may be studied by the city council and planning commission this year. We urge you to approve the final docket as drafted. Thank you for your consideration of these comments.
Thank you. The next person up to speak is Chester Anderson, followed by Connor Graham, and then followed by Max Rumeloff. Go ahead, Chester.
Thank you for remembering my name. That means a lot. I know we are on a recess for a month after this, so I think it's best to leave off on a good note. As we all know, these past few months have been pretty frustrating and a little bit confusing for all of us, and ultimately, I think what I really want us to do most is just have understanding between us and the city. You know, because ultimately, like I've been saying, you know, we really don't want to fight our leaders. We want to be able to work with you guys. And, you know, I think we all know what we want. We want a place for our community to gather, and, you know, for us to have safe places where we can build meaningful relationships with our community. And, you know, I think there's a lot to be said, obviously, about, you know, the process, and, you know, we could have done this in a much more direct and efficient way, but ultimately, what I think this all boils down to is that we know that the firehouse, it's not a safety issue, it's a budget issue, and the issue of whether we want to renovate or possibly rebuild it. I just really hope that, you know, whoever's on the council next, I just hope that we can work together instead of, you know, a lot of us have felt like we're kind of just fighting an uphill battle, and, you know, really what we want is just to feel listened to. I think we've made ourselves plenty clear in that there are so many reasons as to why we should keep the firehouse, you know. I think I speak on behalf of all of us, and I say, you know, like, the firehouse really does stand for everything Redmond stands for as a city. You know, not only, it's our first city hall, it's our first firehouse, first police station, firstale, as Erin will point out a lot. I think there's a lot of, really, a lot of history to be proud of in the firehouse. So, I think, really, instead of trying to move on and talk about the firehouse as something of the past, I really think we should be working hard together to preserve the firehouse and what it stands for. You know, I'm not saying, you know, we have to completely leave Marymore, the other senior centers, you know, I do think they are valuable as transitional spaces, but I do think it's possible for us to all work together to try and preserve the firehouse, or at least keep a teen center like it in the same location, rather than, you know, this, having to fight each other, I guess, you know. I think we should all just work together as a city to preserve our history, preserve our community. I think that's all I can really say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Connor Graham, followed by Max, followed by Wolf.
Hello again. Once, and here because, probably should not be here because of my hip, but I'm still going to be here. I would like to talk to you about how the Old Firehouse is one of the safest venues out there compared to anywhere else kids and people can go. One major example of unsafe venues is Gasworks Park. We literally had a kid fall to his death there. We should not be having teens there, but we are now because we have no other options. All of the bands are going to, like, Gasworks or all of these other random venues, like the Fun House or Lucky Liquor. I was originally debating on going to a show at Lucky Liquor and Tequila, but ended up not going because I just did not feel safe going. Firehouse was one of the safest venues. I felt the most safe going to the Old Firehouse, like, I knew where it was, it's like in the middle of Redmond. I knew I could trust everybody in that venue. While at other venues, I get really nervous because you don't know who's going to be there. Like, so, I've had some weird people approach me outside of the Vera Project several times when I've gone there. It is, I'm constantly on my toes, which makes it a little bit hard to enjoy the music when you're constantly looking out for, like, people drinking, doing drugs, ready to pick a fight. All of this stuff happens. It's, this is why we need these dedicated teen spaces, like the Old Firehouse. And I hope you guys do choose to renovate the place and get it back and running because we need this place more than anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Max, then Wolf Adriatico, then Rosemary Ives.
I'm going to take, since this is the last one before the recess, I do want to take a selfie. I'm a little disappointed we're missing Mayor and Fields, but is that okay? Is that... I'm going to do it anyway. Okay. And then, I think we all are going to, we deserve the recess. I'll start with, "I'm a member of staff and all the views expressed are my own. At the study session, I was disappointed but not surprised," which is a recurring theme. "At the presentation given by the mayor and parks director, they found no new lead paint or asbestos, and the building was found to have only degraded about 3% since the last assessment in 2015. If the building condition and the quality of programs remain the same, then the cause for this closure was from within the administration and not because of a dangerous building. This is without even mentioning the myriad of broken promises. We will continue to host open mics, but Bach-Tarak left because of the change in venue. There are no reductions in staff positions, and yet we're missing Jeff. Live music will continue, but teen musicians don't want to deal with us anymore, and they would rather play shows at real venues in Seattle, like we were talking about with Gasworks. No decisions have been made." That's another one. "The way this has been carried out has been secretive, opaque, and the engagement process was a total cop-out. The furniture at Marymore is a permanent reminder of that. If the stakeholder group, subcommittee, focus group, isn't communicated, it's going to be an issue." I think we just need better communication from everybody involved. I think we give you guys our emails on the sign-in sheet, but I don't think any of us have heard anything. So, I lost my spot. "Oh, I really hope I can expect my elected officials to hold themselves to the standard that all city officials are held to. Communication must improve because for months it has been us talking to a brick wall. Save the firehouse and enjoy the recess."
Thank you. Next up is Wolf Adriatico, then Rosemary Ives, then David Morden.
I am fed up with the city's handling of OFHTC and RCMV, the former and current sites of teen services. Since our forcibly rushed relocation at the end of March, I have come to Marymore to support teen services every day. I've come in an hour or more before staff arrived. I'd even come in days that staff didn't. I confidently attest that I've spent more time at Marymore than any staff since the relocation. After four months, though, I can't stand it. Nothing I do has any effect, from day-to-day management to city policy, nothing the community and I do as voiced from my peers to Marymore affects teen services. Paid programs, a discriminatory plan hated by my peers, unserved teens who can't afford it, is unavoidable now. Our concerns do nothing to divert this, only meant with buttoned-up excuses that few assistants will be available, which brings hollow and ignorant of how many teens this barrier will turn away. This cost, the city claims, will subsidize free drop-in activities. However, that cost would not exist if OFH was not closed, and if the city wasn't buying all-new audio, computer, and recreation equipment that OFH already has. Equipment that's been donated by countless people that thought it was going to OFH, not to the senior center, in scattered locations, not jammed in closets and left out to be stolen. They thought it would be handled with respect, with reverence, by like-minded, passionate, creative people, to give back to a place they held dear. Donations in honor of the deceased, the vulnerable, and simply the good times they had at OFH. The city blatantly disrespects all of them, and the city doesn't care. You fucked up. You failed us. Claiming innocence only digs you into a deeper pit of lies. What once could have been an oversight persists as gross negligence fueled by hate and greed. Pride goeth before destruction, and a haughty spirit before a fall. Proverbs 16:18. On April 1st, the first chance we had to communicate with the city, albeit more public comment, I asked, "What will tomorrow look like?" Tomorrow's here. It isn't good, but there's always another tomorrow. It's make-amends. So, I ask again, "What will tomorrow look like?" Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Rosemary Ives, followed by Dr. David Morden. Go ahead, former Mayor Ives.
Pardon me?
I said, "Go ahead, former Mayor Ives."
Oh, thank you. Good evening. My name is Rosemary Ives, the former mayor of Redmond from 1992 through 2007, and founder of the Old Firehouse Teen Center. The center's unprecedented success can be attributed to its first director, Kate Becker, and police officers Nick Lovell and Bill Corson, and the many staff over its more than 32 years, who listened to our youth, who simply wanted a safe place to legally loiter and hang out. "It is like no other, and was best described by a student who was bullied most of his life, testifying with sweaty palms before the council and me," he said. "It's like Cheers, a place where everyone knows your name." I attended last week's study session and read the consultant's report, listening attentively, coming away with the assessment that the building has some issues and deficiencies, but is still very serviceable. As mayor, I was always curious, asking lots of questions of staff and consultants, so my curiosity is particularly heightened as to why the closure was so abrupt, who made the decision, with what technical expertise, what were the specific reasons? Did the mayor and director even visit the firehouse? And why did the mayor and director see to it that only three scenarios were presented? It seems to me there was a major omission of what should have been the first and most sensible scenario. Where issues and deficiencies were identified, prioritize accordingly to what is urgent and most important, important but less urgent, along with cost estimates, followed by less important, not important, such as new kitchen cabinets and appliances. During my tenure, in 2002, the city did significant seismic retrofitting. At the study session, a 2014 analysis by Ming was mentioned. What was Ming's analysis? What action did the city take? Was money spent immediately on urgent matters, and were funds allotted in the next two biennial budgets of 2015 and 2017? In 2018, the McKinstry Report analyzed all city buildings. What were its findings for the Old Firehouse? And again, were urgent and important issues addressed immediately and followed up with funds in the next three budgets in 2019, 21, and 23? It was incredulous that scenarios with $9 million and $12 million price tags were brought to the council, but when asked about how much money was set aside for the firehouse in the budget CIP, the mayor and the director didn't know. Before the closure, were all the staff given the opportunity to discuss the matter, and what about the regular attendees? Some basic information is missing, too, from knowing what the hours of operation actually are, the staffing levels over the past four or five years, to what programming has been and is. Seems to me that the council has a great opportunity to engage with present attendees, their families, friends, and the community, in brainstorming to create a new vision together, rather than react to the administration's premature proposal that was vetted with a very limited audience.
And in conclusion?
I do. In conclusion, right there. My curiosity and criticism is commensurate with how much I care about Redmond's residents. It has always been about having their back tonight and going forward. Council members, I hope you show how much you care by being as curious as you can be. Thank you, and appreciate you.
Thank you.
Ms. Ives, will you email that to the council, please?
And I think we have a paper copy of that.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Morden. You may begin.
Good evening, council members and mayor pro tem. I'm David Morton. I'd like to present findings from People for Climate Actions, or PCA's new report, 12 Critical City Climate Actions to Reduce Greenhouse Gas Emissions. The report identifies 12 essential actions that a city must implement to achieve a commitment of 80% emissions reduction by 2050. Because these actions take years to reach full impact, all actions must be underway by late 2027 to reach this target. The report focuses on the two largest sources of urban emissions, existing buildings and transportation, which together account for over 80% of community greenhouse gas emissions. For existing buildings, PCA recommends the following actions. First, expanding the Energy Smart East Side program beyond heat pumps to include weatherization and heat pump water heaters. Second, creating decarbonization programs for multifamily and small commercial buildings. Third, adopting electrification ordinances for large buildings. And fourth, requiring home energy score postings to drive market awareness. For transportation, PCA recommends five actions to reduce car dependency. First, promoting public transit through increased frequency, reduced fares, and regional collaboration. Second, expanding safe biking and pedestrian pathways citywide. Third, supporting employer programs that encourage alternatives to driving. Fourth, expanding EV charging requirements for new multifamily buildings. And fifth, promoting EV charging installations in existing multifamily buildings. Two supporting actions are equally critical, establishing community education programs and creating dedicated funding streams to sustain these efforts long-term. Climate equity is crucial. Programs must ensure all residents can transition to a sustainable future with technical and financial assistance for those who need it. Low-income households can benefit greatly from building electrification. While waiting for state and federal action, Redmond can act now to combat climate change. The successful Energy Smart East Side collaboration proves that regional cooperation achieves economies of scale. Every year of delay makes 2050 targets harder to reach. I urge you to begin immediately by updating... I urge you to begin immediately by updating your climate action plan to include these 12 actions, establishing dedicated funding streams, and starting implementation by 2027. Your children's future depends on the decisions you make today. Thank you.
Thank you. And before we go to online, I just wanted to share a note to everyone who came to testify around the Old Firehouse Teen Center. Just for those who weren't watching our study session last week, we will be convening a stakeholder group that will really be centering teen voices, but also include other voices of folks who care a lot about the Old Firehouse Teen Center to look at the opportunities and the options for the council to be able to get input on making this decision. That group is going to be convened starting in September, and I believe that the outreach is going to be happening this month. So if you're interested, please reach out to our city staff. We've formed a council subcommittee that will be working with the staff to be able to give input on who gets into that bigger stakeholder group, and also just input on the process, and also making sure that the rest of the council can have information on how that stakeholder group is being informed, and also make sure the rest of the council can give input on who can be helpful at the table there. And then that stakeholder group will be meeting one to two times per month on Monday evenings, and we will offer both in-person and virtual options, so that way we can get maximum participation. There's also going to be some special focus groups with teens in order to get different types of teen perspectives throughout our teen population and draw in more voices and input. So just wanted to let everyone know that's coming. There's also, I've been informed that a website will be set up and available with information both on the stakeholder discussions, on the focus group conclusions, and then also on the Old Firehouse Teen Center data, just so that everyone can follow along and engage throughout the process. So just wanted to update both the council as well as the community on that. Was able to get that information from our Parks team, and part of our subcommittee's work will be to continue to gather that information and disseminate it. So thanks for everyone for coming out on that tonight. With that, we will move on to our online public comment. There's one person signed up to speak. Joe Kunsler.
Hello?
Hi, Mr. Kunsler. You have three minutes to speak.
Wow, thank you, Madam President. You can be my president any time. It's Joe Kunsler here. Hi there, Redmond Council. It's 8:00 PM in Redmond, home of the Critzer presidency. I'm sure this council may clear the state of moral bankruptcy in the wrong words, and it's a 4:00 special meeting. Sadly, not on Redmond TV that I tell everyone about now. But your moral courage is why people want to have selfies and autograph posters of you, and I really appreciate your moral courage and being trustworthy enough to stand up for what's right. You see, tonight was supposed to be the first night to pay tribute to President Critzer as the first term comes to an end about trust, faith, and valor, in part because we're supposed to respect and work with our leaders to unlock the best versions of ourselves. President Critzer has done that with me. However, it would be cruel to not at least thank Vice President Forsyth, plus Council Member Stewart, and plus Nukovina, sorry for any mispronunciation, for helping hold that hate-monger Alex Zimmerman accountable on July 1st. You see, I'm very depressed, and frankly, I'm a little angry for President Critzer. You know, President Critzer was left off of the minutes of July 1st for calling out Alex Zimmerman to start historic six-month exclusion for hate speech and campaigning during a public meeting. I think this omission of President Critzer's involvement is bad for open meetings and that we can't trust a full record of events is being kept. I think it's a crime against history as much as Sound Transit having Tim Imman write voters' pamphlet statements. It's kind of saying that makes Bear Creek run through my warehouse office and Washco headquarters. There was a before Critzer era where Zimmerman could have a sanctuary in the east side, and a Critzer era where we take the fight to hate's front door, and we stand up for human rights, and we do what's right, because one of my political heroes said, "Never again means never again." And that's something that makes me very happy as somebody who's had a rough life. Yes, Tony Blair's kaleidoscope has been shaken by July 1, and the pieces aren't flux. Before they do, let's reorder this round around some shared values. So, this is probably no surprise to anyone who's been paying attention in the last little while, but I'm going to ask this council to please see about having Redmond TV set up at the Bellevue King County District Court at 8:45 PM on August 20. Your nemesis Alex Zimmerman's having a competency hearing. I think it should be on television. I think the public should see our courts in action. And I think those of us who believe in never again is never again want clear. We want justice, not vengeance. We want the justice system to work. We want to trust that justice is being done here, and that if someone's having a mental health problem, we're going to deal with it. We're not going to just let things sit investor and wait for January for this monster to come back and come after our favorite president and our favorite city council. Yes, I would redshirt of a president who stands up to me for her people.
Mr. Kunsler, your time is up.
Okay. In conclusion, Redmond style, we believe that never again means never again. Therefore, I'm a Redmond Breder. Thank you for your public services always, Madam President. I got to go. My time's up. Thanks.
Thank you.
Bye.
Items from the audience is now closed. The next item of business is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second?
It has been moved and seconded. It's been moved by Council Vice President Forsyth and seconded by Council Member Stewart. Are there any items to pull? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote, starting with Council Member Fields.
Aye.
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 Aye. It passes seven to zero, and with the passage of that, I will read a few resolution ordinance and resolution titles into the record. Consent item number 11, resolution number 1609, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Redmond, amending resolution number 1604, section 1.4, for purchases of instructional artistic services. AM number 25-120, ordinance number 3225, an ordinance of the City of Redmond, Washington, setting the framework and conducting concurrent review of the cumulative effect of all proposed amendments, the Redmond Comprehensive Plan and related amendments to the Comprehensive Zoning Code for the 2025 to 2026 Annual Comprehensive Amendment Review Docket, including new and amended policies, concurrent zoning amendments, and new and amended functional plans. And also, with the passage of the consent agenda, we have two different people to swear in. So we have both a new commissioner, Sana Parsi, and then we also have Rebecca Mueller, our new city attorney. So I will invite them up to be sworn in by our city clerk. Come on up. All right, and council will go in and... Is this on? It's on, okay. So I'll read the oath to you, and then if you agree, at the end you just say, "I will" or "I do," and then you'll sign this, and then shake hands with the council members. So it's pretty easy. All right, raise your right hand. Do you, Sana Parsi, having been duly appointed to the Parks, Trails, and Recreation Commission of the City of Redmond, Washington, do solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of your office as prescribed by law and to the best of your ability, and that you will support and maintain the ordinances of the City of Redmond, the laws, and the Constitution of the State of Washington and the United States of America?
I do.
Congratulations. Thank you. Go ahead and sign. Okay. Do you not need to go over it? Do you, Rebecca Mueller, having been duly appointed to the position of city attorney of the City of Redmond, Washington, do solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of your office as prescribed by law and to the best of your ability, and that you will support and maintain the ordinances of the City of Redmond, the laws, and the Constitution of the State of Washington and the United States of America?
I do.
Congratulations. Well, thank you all for joining us for a little pomp and circumstance, especially excited about our new city attorney. It's not every day that we get a new in-house city attorney. It's a new thing for Redmond, and excited to see Ms. Mueller's contribution here in the city. Welcome, and congratulations, Ms. Parsi as well. Excited to see your service. So the next item on the agenda, our next item of business is ombuds report. We don't have any public hearings, and we don't have any staff reports, so the next is ombuds report. For July, we had Council Member Anderson, and for August, we have Council Member Salahu Dean. So I'll go to Council Member Anderson. Do you have anything else to wrap up from July?
I do, thank you. We received a letter from Columbia Pacific Advisors noted earlier today during public comment. We had a request from Avondale Green HOA to change the sign out in front of their entrance... I'm sorry. The sign out in their front entrance to make it more visible. Comments regarding an employee terminated in the Parks Department, a request to transition to empty tennis courts into pickleball courts at Perrigo Park, ADA accessible parking for Sprinter vans, I think that is at Sound Transit, requests for bilingual tutoring to put flyers up in City Hall, support for the ISA gun range business license renewal, and a letter about the senior center programs and the building history and comments.
Thank you. Council Member Salahu Dean.
Thank you. I thought that that letter came in in August, maybe I was mistaken, so I was going to report on that, but we had a letter on the senior center program and the building itself. Also had, nothing else came in this month, but just rolling into the rest of my ombuds report really quickly, had a great conversation with some community-based organizations, specifically talking about what's happening at the federal level, as well as immigration and some fears there. Had that with Council President Critzer, as well as Council Member Stewart. Excited about the opportunities that we have moving forward on that. Thank you.
Council Vice President Forsyth.
Thank you. I was reached out to about a new resident who had been trying to get trash services and has gone now two or three weeks without, so was able to get them connected with some resources to hopefully get that resolved. Had some conversations around some traffic safety issues and conversations around the potential unionization at Meta for the food service employees. Thanks.
Thanks. Are there other ombuds comments? Council Member Stewart?
Thank you so much. I had two visitors to my office hours last week. Just as a quick reminder, I do not have office hours on August 14th, but I will be back on the 28th for regularly scheduled programming. I also attended the meeting with community-based organizations supporting immigrants, and I believe the next step is for the council members to sync up with the mayor about some of the requests, including possible bridge funding, improved coordination, and really working hard to fill the Ready AR positions that the council has previously funded. Council President Critzer and I had a meeting with local workers who are working to organize their shop. They are food service workers here in the City of Redmond, and just as a flag for my colleagues, there is a sign-on letter being sent individually with the opportunity for your consideration. I met with a community member in the park to discuss their experience on the community equity advisory team and their concerns about expanded police technologies, including the license plate readers. And I do want to congratulate the recreation team for an awesome first concert. Council Member Noeva Kamina and I were at the Rockin' in the River concert, and the lawn was absolutely packed. It was a wonderful, wonderful night, so be sure to check out the rest of the schedule and enjoy some of those shows. Thanks.
Council Member Noeva Kamina.
Thank you. And on that segueing into continuing on with Rockin' on the River, as a few of our teens that are here with us and were earlier, fellow council member Stewart, former city council members were in attendance, many, many, many residents enjoying the evening. I saw even a few people pull off from the trail. And it's great not only that we're there to enjoy and participate in community, but also then to have conversations about our expanded policing capabilities, like our drone as first responder. Had a couple of people asking about that, so I'm not sure if they had seen the one that we've got tethered recently in action or not, but lots of great conversations. Back mid-July, I also attended the Port of Seattle East Side Unplugged, where Commissioner Sam Cho went over a few of the new upgrades, capital projects that are underway, plans to sustainably move forward in the future, how we're going to be able to meet travel, increase travel demands, and how that impacts us here on the east side. Also, we recently had an environmental sustainability newsletter that came out this past week. I've been talking to a lot of residents about what they want to get done by the end of the year, and just as a reminder in that newsletter is a great call-out that there are a lot of federal tax credits that are going to be sunsetting at the end of this year. So if there is an environmental sustainability, climate resistance project that you wanted either for your home or your business, that you may be able to have some tax credits, again, sunsetting on December 31st.
Thanks for that important reminder. Council Member Fields.
Yes, thank you. So I received a number of texts from the equestrian community that have horses near McFarrel Werder Park, and there's a significant concern that the recent sand put into the arena is too deep and actually endangers the horses. And the reason that I got these texts were because they did not get a response from our Parks Department, and I don't know enough about it. I am just passing on the message that many of the people who own horses there will not use the arena because it endangers and potentially cripples their horses, and they at least deserve a response from our Parks Department.
Thank you, Council Member Fields. Did you send that over to Director Hamilton?
I will.
Great, thanks. If you want a copy, I'm happy to support follow-up on that. Thanks for raising that. Any other items for ombuds? I think everyone has gone, actually, except for me, but most of the other council members covered things that I did with them. I will say, I think we did, following up on the council's request for us to convene the meeting with our nonprofit organizations that work especially with our immigrant communities, have this meeting, and as Council Member Stewart mentioned, I think a next step is to follow up with the mayor and come back to the council. I'd say that my biggest takeaway from that meeting was that a lot of our community-based organizations, they are bridging some really big gaps right now, and they are stepping up, whether or not they have the resources, to just put in their time and support our community members in need, and it's incredible, and just want to thank them here publicly. And they are also looking for our city to support them in meaningful ways beyond words, but actually to support with some actions. So I hope to come back to the council with some options for us in the time ahead on that. And with that, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda. The next item is committee reports. Are there any committee reports this evening? Council Vice President Forsyth.
Thank you. I had the fortune to chair the East Trail meeting two weeks ago, and we actually held it in-person this time up in Woodenville, and we got to do a site walk of the new connections that are going to be made in Woodenville, and see a lot of the growth that's been happening in Woodenville and how East Trail will play into that. I have a map that I can share with you all. It's really interesting to see how the trail is going to continue to be developed, and just great strides being made with East Trail. For anyone listening, if you want to come to the Redmond opening of East Trail, it's September 12th on a Friday, and there's more work to be done, and I look forward to helping support our neighboring communities to continue East Trail from north to south.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there other other committee reports? Council Member Stewart?
Thank you so much. I attended the One Redmond Government Affairs Committee meeting. The major topic of discussion at that meeting was an update on the Development Services Improvement Project. Council will have our own update on this project on the fall. We are coming into the home stretch on this. The report from the, from Matrix included 70 recommended ranked actions in order of priority, and there has been so much engagement with the development community on this. But even after the meeting, they had a chance to review these 70 actions and provide additional input on the categorization of those top 70 actions or the ones that really should come to the top as highest priority. So again, the committees have lots of opportunities to check in on this, and council will have our own update in the fall. I believe they also got an update from the fire department on the functional plan. I, however, had to hop to my second meeting that day, which was the Association of Washington Cities Legislative Priorities Committee for 2026. I just want to flag for the council that I may have to put a couple things in your inbox over the recess because the agenda for AWC will be adopted very early in September, and we are working to refine the last little bit of the agenda. The way I characterize this year's draft legislative agenda for the Association of Washington Cities is it's about funding tools. So some of the tools that we are discussing having priority around include lengthening the amount of time for which a levy can be lifted, increasing funding for public defense given the new standards, tools for the development of new deeply affordable housing, and tools for the preservation and maintenance of our transportation system. So money and tools to fund these things are kind of the theme. If anyone has any feedback and they want to discuss that, please do reach out. I'm happy to chat. I have a couple of committees coming up during the recess, including this week. I'll be working with some fellow committee members at the National League of Cities on our Energy, Environment, and Natural Resources Committee, particularly in our work to elevate the need for funding for water infrastructure. That's in part being led by some other members of the Washington delegation. And I'll be meeting with Rainbow Connections, which is a program at the King County Library. I don't think I've mentioned this before, but I'm kind of helping a community group liaise ahead of an event coming up. It's actually going to be hosted at the Redmond Senior and Community Center for the first time this fall. Thanks.
Wonderful. Other committee reports? Council Member Noeva Kamina?
Thank you. It feels like so long ago. At our last board meeting at Cascade Water Alliance, we took a moment to recognize the retirement of Ray Hoffman. He's been the CEO of Cascade Water Alliance for a number of years, and Ray has been a strong regional leader in water planning and conservation with a very long history of public service, including his time as director at Seattle Public Utilities. Under Ray's leadership, not only was he, is a drinking water expert, however, his level of leadership and values and ethics were just beyond reproach. And throughout his leadership at Cascade, he helped secure long-term water resources for our communities, and just want to make sure that, you know, we, again, continue thanking Ray for his dedication and wish him all the best in his very well-deserved retirement.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any other reports? All right, well, I will, I'll jump in with just a few notes. I actually realized I missed one thing in Ombuds Report, which is that I got to go read to some really adorable kiddos at the YMCA Early Learning Center just off of Astera Park this last week, and it was really great to be able to see that rising generation within our community. Also great to be near Astera Park, where on September 25th, we'll have our next council conversations. I heard there's a rumor there may be ice cream. So come out to Astera Park, put that on your calendars further out ahead. I'm going to go backwards now, a week before that, we'll have the Downtown Redmond Art Walk on September 18th. We'll have a council booth there, so come and meet us there. And then last, going backwards, is that tomorrow night, part of the reason that we have this special meeting tonight is that tomorrow will be National Night Out, so people will be gathering in their cul-de-sacs and other areas throughout our communities, in their courtyards, and we'll be talking about what it means to create safe and vibrant neighborhoods. So try to check out the city website to find an event near you, and I heard there'll be ice cream at that event as well, maybe also some hot dogs or other types of delicious delicacies. So get out there, engage with your community. I know I always hear after National Night Out that it's a moment when people feel most kind of connected in our city, so I hope we'll all take advantage of it. Also tomorrow night, it's the last day to turn in your ballot. We have a primary election, so just a reminder to do your civic duty. Right here at City Hall, you can drop off your ballot at a drop box. You also can drop it off at the Marymore Community Center, and there's also one in Crossroads. If you live over in the Overlake neighborhood, you also can drop it in the mail, but just a reminder that it has to be postmarked by Election Day. So just a reminder there, and thanks to everyone for voting. And with that, we have no unfinished business, no new items of business, and that concludes the business items for our meeting. If there's no objection to adjourning, hearing none, the meeting is adjourned.